Welcome. Let's start this meeting November 19th. A couple of items I want to address. Obviously, there's some wind-related power problems. We do have a backup generator, but there is a delay. If we do lose power, which will cause a necessary reset for all of our devices. So just bear with us if we do lose power and we should be able to come back on shortly. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Here.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Arn?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, can I stand, can we stand for the flag salute, please?
A move to accept the agenda in order and content?
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Tonight, I'm happy to announce that we have two special presentations. The first one's one of my favorites. We have Chief Myers here to present some lifesaving awards. Chief Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The three come on up. I'm gonna make my officers stand up here awkwardly and embarrass them a little bit. This is Officer Jackson, Officer Walker-Ritgers, and NPO Shaman Wicklund. Each of them is receiving a lifesaver award tonight. Part of the sheriff's office culture is we have these core principles: Leadership, integrity, service, and teamwork. And what I'm talking about tonight is emblematic of service and teamwork that saved someone's life by all three of these folks up here. We're in sheriff's office uniforms. I just want to point out, like, you know, we have this relationship with the sheriff's office. Officer Wicklund down there at the end spent years and years working as a Woodinville police officer. He's got 16 years with the sheriff's office. On this particular day, he was working overtime here as well. Officer Jackson is part of our Woodinville PD team right now. She's got a couple of years, or maybe almost a couple of years, with the sheriff's office here, but was a lateral from Texas with the Harris County Sheriff's Office down there. And Officer Walker-Ritgers is brand-new, but still part of the sheriff's office and was working in the unincorporated area on this day and came into Woodinville to help. So we've got a little bit of like that blended support that we get from the sheriff's office on this call. So on October 2nd, Officer Jackson, while out on routine patrol, came across a collision that had just happened on Woodinville-Snowomish Road. Hadn't been called in by 911 yet. She just saw it and rolled up and started to assess what was going on. Called for aid, called for backup to show up. The driver, it was a car versus a truck. And the driver of the car had sustained some pretty severe injuries to their legs, such that their airbag had deployed, all the airbags had deployed, and the driver was unconscious when she got there. As all the officers showed up on scene, they started using tourniquets to stop the bleeding that this person had in their legs. After applying two tourniquets, one on each leg, the person finally woke up. And the blood loss was significant enough that had those tourniquets not gone there, it would have just been minutes before there was a fatal loss of blood. That driver was able to get put in an ambulance and take it to the hospital. After that, these guys all stayed on scene while our major accident investigators came out because of the nature of the injury and kind of did the full, complete investigation that we do. The fire department came back after that and specifically came out to us and said, hey, had it not been for the timely application of those tourniquets, for getting that person that type of aid that they did, that person would not have made it to the hospital and would not have lived. So that, this was a team effort by all three of these that were on scene. Had it not been for each one of them there, that driver would not have made it to the hospital. So Sheriff's Office has a lifesaver award. Here's what it says on that. "On October 2nd, 2024, deputies Torche Jackson, Mark Walker-Ritgers, and NPO Shaman Wicklund displayed extraordinary care and skill, saving a critically injured driver at a collision in Woodinville. They quickly recognized the severity of the driver's injuries and the imminent threat of rapid blood loss. Quickly responding and coordinating efforts, they worked around the wrecked vehicle to successfully apply tourniquets to both legs of the driver. The actions of Deputy Jackson, Walker-Ritgers, and NPO Wicklund surely saved the life of this driver and are an example of the service and teamwork at the heart of the Woodinville Police Department and the King County Sheriff's Office." So thank you, guys. Hand you this one. Thank you. Thank you.
Big group. All right, one, two, three, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you did that day and every day. Appreciate your service. Next, we have another presentation by, from King County Regional Homelessness Authority, Nigel Herbig, also Mayor of Kenmore, but representing King County Regional Homelessness Authority today. Welcome, Mr. Herbig.
Thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, I appreciate your time today. Like the mayor said, my name is Nigel Herbig. I'm the Intergovernmental Relations Manager for the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Unfortunately, my colleague Abby was unable to join tonight, so you just get me. Tonight, we're gonna cover a couple of things. We have some leadership updates at the authority. We'll touch on the North King County Interlocal Agreement Annual Report, and we'll talk a little bit about severe weather. So first off, after a year with interim CEOs, we have a permanent CEO in place, which is really exciting from a staff standpoint, is great for the organization. Dr. Kelly Kinnison joined us in August, is our new permanent CEO. She comes from Housing and Human Services in DC. She comes with incredible experience navigating the federal government and is eager to bring that experience to KCRHA. And she's been building out her leadership team since she arrived here. Late breaking news, since I sent these slides over, it was just announced yesterday that Simon Foster is going to be our deputy CEO starting in January. Simon comes from King County, where he is a department, what is his exact thing? He is, he is the Department of Community and Human Services Division Director for Housing, Homelessness, and Community Development at King County. 18 years of leadership in this field, so we're really excited to have Simon starting in January. We have a new Chief Programs Officer, Irene Augersen, who came to us from Baltimore, where she ran the Director of the Mayor's Office of Homelessness Services. Before that, she was the Director of Coordinated Entry and Problem Solving for the city and county of San Francisco. We have a new permanent Chief Finance Officer, James Rouse. He's been with us for a while in a temporary capacity, but we're really happy to bring him over on a permanent capacity. Dr. Monica Gross has joined, is our Director of Planning and Special Projects. She comes to us from Alaska. And as you can imagine, coming from Alaska, she brings us a lot of experience with severe weather response. Arlene Hampton came to us this summer as the Director of Homeless Investments, and she oversees all our contracts with our providers. She brings a lot of experience working with the providers and comes out of our provider community. And actually, one more late-breaking piece of news that didn't make it in here. Our Chief Equity and Impact Officer has just announced, I think it was last week, Tarmine Fentress is gonna be joining us next month as the Chief of Equity and Impact. She comes to us from Plymouth Housing, where she's currently the Senior Director of Health, Equity, Research, and Policy Development. So we're very excited to have our, to have kind of our C-suite getting filled out and to have leadership in place.
It looks like you have it all filled out except for the
Yeah, the chief.
External Affairs or what?
Yeah, Chief External Affairs. That's still undergoing a hiring process. We have an acting chief right now.
What is that role with KCRHA?
It's gonna oversee government relations as well as our communication side of things, so. So this went to staff and should have made it all to you. And if it hasn't, I'm happy to forward it over to you. But as part of the, when Woodinville joined the other four North King County cities in the North King County ILA, part of the agreement is that you would receive an annual report that covers the funding, system data for what's happening in North King County. We talk about some of our accomplishments, some of our places where we can seek improvement, and severe weather. And I'm gonna run through some of those, but not all of them right now. We are, these are areas where we could seek improvement. We are working to be better at seeking funding from all sorts of sources. I know that we're all struggling right now, cities and us alike, with the ending of a lot of one-time funding that we got from the federal government. We have a lot of programs that were stood up by King County or the City of Seattle or other organizations with one-time funding, and we're having to do a lot of scrambling to get those programs moved over to sustainable, long-term, ongoing funding. So we're working to get a lot more funding into the system there. We are doing a lot of work to connect our providers with the information that, with the connections that they need to enhance their services and be successful in that. We're working on tailoring programming for North King County in particular, looking at the service gaps that might, oh, this went forward on me. Oh, I guess I skipped a thing. I apologize. Oh, I guess accomplishments was first. Well, never mind. We'll talk about accomplishments. One thing we're happy about is all of our invoices are out and they're complete, they're on time. It might not sound like a lot, but for our providers, that is a big deal, and we're very happy to have our CFO on and have all of that happening seamlessly. We, all of our providers now have their own dedicated contract monitor at the authority that can provide technical assistance, and they get proactive monitoring and support. We are moving our grants management system to Salesforce. It's currently in a different program that has proven to be very difficult and cumbersome for both us and our providers to work on. So we are transitioning to Salesforce right now. That should be done in the near future. I think they're just ironing out some final kinks on that front. And we're offering trainings to all of our providers for that. We have, the HMIS Inventory Enhancement Project is kind of interesting. The HMIS is the Homelessness Management Information System that HUD mandates that every continuum of care have. And we have done work in our HMIS system so that providers can actually log in and see in real time where beds are open. We have very high utilization throughout King County in the 90% plus. And so knowing where there's open bed can sometimes be difficult to discern. We've made that easier. I know that sounds like a very simple thing. It was not a very simple thing to make that work. We're really happy with the work that we did on the North King County Severe Weather Shelter. I'll get into that a little bit, a little bit more. And we're really happy with the work that we've been doing on the regular meetings that we've been having with human service managers in the various cities, along with our partners in the region, like the North King County Coalition on Homelessness and the North Urban Human Services Alliance. Those connections have been invaluable and have really helped us as we build out the work in North King County. All right, this brings us back to our areas for improvement, sorry. So we are, we are doing work to engage North King County providers and city partners in procurement and planning processes, so we can really make sure that what we're delivering in North King County is what North King County needs. We're working to expand the pool of providers that work in North King County. Currently, there's only a handful of providers that do work in North King County. There are smaller providers that maybe don't have the infrastructure in place to bid on a government contract to participate in our, in our request for proposals. So we're working with some smaller providers to help them get that backend work done so that they can compete when we put out an RFP. And we're also working to bring other providers who maybe hadn't worked in North King County traditionally to come up north. And one example of that is in our severe weather shelter that we have in North King County. That's being stashed by the Urban League, which I don't believe had done a lot of work in North King County previously. And then on the severe weather response, there are things that we could improve. We are hoping, we're looking at co-locating the shelter with maybe existing programming or existing resources in the community, so that folks who are coming in from the cold or the heat will have more direct access to services. We're also looking closer at a seasonal shelter model versus an activation model. Right now, we, you know, when the temperature reaches a certain threshold for a certain number of nights, that's when we open up our severe weather shelters. That's what we're able to do right now with the funding that we have. But we are, we do think that a seasonal shelter, something open, say, November to March, would be more reliable for folks who are seeking help, more certain that they would know that it's open, rather than them having to, you know, go to our website and see if it's open. And it would also make it easier for folks to make the connections they need to other services beyond just shelter. So this is, this shows kind of our program performance in North King County over the last three and a half years. One thing that jumped out to me when I first got this graph was the, so on the bottom line for each year is EXIST2PH. That stands for permanent housing. And you'll notice it looks like a drop-off between 2021 and 2022, down to 23 and 24. And I asked our folks about that. That's actually because coming during the pandemic, the federal government invested a lot of money into what was called emergency housing vouchers. King County got about 1,400 of those. And they're essentially like housing choice vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, that sort of thing. And we were one of, I would argue, the highest-performing continuum of care in the country at getting those out and leased up. We got to 100% lease-up before anybody, as far as I can tell. And we were begging the feds to transfer us additional housing vouchers, because we were ready and willing to put them to work and get people inside. Unfortunately, they were not willing to have housing vouchers across state lines. And so we, I believe, got an extra 12 at one point from counties that weren't doing the work in Washington State, but there was still a lot left not spent in other states. And it was, it's a mild disappointment of mine. But we will be working with our federal partners to look for other opportunities for similar programs. And that, that was during 2122, which is why you see the drop in EXIST permanent housing in 2324. The data for 24 there only goes through the end of September. We expect that we will be meeting or surpassing our 23 numbers by the end of 2024. The severe weather shelter. So North King County has had severe weather shelters in the past for many years. They've been mostly run by volunteers. The one that was run at St. Dunston's Church in Shoreline was no longer able to run it on a volunteer basis. So we got some money from King County, we got some money from our North King County partners, and we put out our request for proposals, and we got one back from the Urban League to staff. And luckily, St. Dunston's was happy to still allow their space to be used. We had a fairly mild winter, so we only had about 15 nights between January and March when it was activated. We served 155 guests, served 310 meals. We had two folks who actually got moved into housing from coming in, which is kind of a big deal, especially for something like severe weather shelter. We had 14 folks, we had 14 folks who were able to get transportation to the shelter, and then everybody was offered service, referrals, and supplies. The transportation support that I'm talking about here is police, fire. Some of the folks from Racer drove folks over. And then the Urban League themselves also was able to use some of their funding to pay for some Lyft or Uber rides for folks. Now, we are looking, and I'll get to this later, we are looking at ways to improve that transportation side of things, especially given the location of the St. Dunston site. For us, it's always kind of a struggle or something that we have to work on to get the word out about when we're activating for severe weather. The QR code that's up there will, leads to our severe weather site. When we are activated, that site is updated at least twice a day. If you can, kind of, the site's the, kind of the middle there. You can click on North King County, it'll show you what's available. When we are activated, we're constantly calling through our partners, finding out what's open, what's available, and updating that site as often as we can. It's, we keep it on the same exact webpage too, year over year, so that folks who have that in their phone or have been able to find it in the past can access it really easily when it's getting cold or hot or smoky. But, you know, we do need help from our government partners to help get the word out. Social media is great. But we, it takes everybody to kind of get the word out to folks who maybe are not quite as connected as, as everybody else. So the North King County severe weather, because we had a mild winter, there was quite a bit of underspend left over from that contract. And when the weather started to warm up, we actually reached out to Urban League with the underspend that we had and said, hey, we already have a contract with you. When it gets warmer, are you willing to step in and do some summer work? And they were. That right there is a cooling canopy that was set up at the therapeutic health services over in Shoreline. And it had places for people to sit, they had misting fans, they had cooling towels, they had food, they had water. They had, you know, Gatorade-like things for people, to make sure they had their electrolytes. What they discovered, though, is most folks weren't walking around looking for a canopy, even if they knew where it was. And so they actually pivoted and went to direct outreach to find people where they knew people were and make sure the folks had the supplies they needed to stay safe on those hot days. One other thing that we'll be doing for this upcoming winter activation, which could be starting any time now with the cold we've been having, is instead of only opening it based on county-wide activation protocols, we are actually looking at some regional-specific things. So if it's, say, we're gonna have a cold snap, and we know it's only gonna hit North King County, then we'll be able to open up the North King County once, instead of opening up everything countywide. So that was one thing that we heard from our partners, is King County's a big county, and the weather can vary quite a bit. So that is something we're doing this time. And then on the transportation side, we are in active talks right now with Hope Link about setting up essentially a shuttle when we're having severe weather, so that folks all across North King County will have a certain way to get over to the shelter and then get back the next morning. So that's not ironed out yet, but we are having conversations and trying to figure out ways to make that, to make that work better for folks. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions folks may have.
Any questions for Mayor Herbig? Councilmember Arn?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a little bit more detail about the possible transportation for the severe weather shelters. We, while we are part of the North King County ILA, we are actually pretty equidistant between severe weather shelters in Shoreline and, like Redmond. Is there transportation available for the severe weather shelters that will open in East King County?
You know, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I will, I will ask around a bit and circle back with you through email. Does that work?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming out. Appreciate all the information.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Public comments? Okay, when we, when I call your name, please come up to the microphone and state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. First, we have Rosa Antoine. Welcome.
Rosa Antoine, I live here in Woodinville. And I'm very happy to hear that you all are looking into protections for renters. And I think that's a very important thing. I had gone through kind of a bump blast. I forget exactly when it started, but they sold, the people who owned the apartments that I had moved in at a level that I thought I could afford, sold the place to new owners. And they got real busy, and the first thing they did to welcome us to their world was to tell us to get out. And that was exciting. And so, you know, some of us didn't know where to go, me. And so it kind of dragged on through a couple of months. And then all of a sudden, they changed their mind, and they decided we didn't have to move out. But then they moved us inside. And I had to move out of the apartment I was in. I went into another one at a much higher rate than I had been paying. I mean, like, about, I don't remember what it was. It was about 500, and then I got them down another 100. And I've somehow or other managed to keep it together, and I'm still living there. And I like where I live, and I did not want to move. I came up here from California, when I couldn't afford to live there anymore. And all of a sudden, it looked like, oh, I'm paying just about what I paid in California now. Gee, how did that happen? It's very discouraging when you're a renter and you realize that you're at the mercy of whoever owns the place, and they seem to have no guidelines or controls or anything. So I made it through, and I'm still here, and I want to stay here. So I hope that you can come up with some good things to help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marilyn. And I'm sorry, Marilyn, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce your last name correctly.
Arubarena.
Arubarena.
Yes.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone, state your name and whether you live in city limits. You'll have three minutes.
Marilyn Arubarena, and hello, Woodinvillians. I would like to say that I'm making my last stand on the same subject, which is the raising of the rents. A Greenbrier is senior, is the only low-income senior place in Woodinville apartment house. I checked. We need the rent raises to stop. If they continue, if they have to continue, they should be connected to COLA or the Cost of Living Adjustment, Social Security. That would be possible for us to pay. However, now, the problem is, as I'm sure you guys know, that we are in the same matrix system as people with AMIs of $114,000, and they are working actively. We are ancient, and we have fixed incomes of under $30,000. Is there a way that I could talk to the city's lawyers, or lawyer, to find out how, some kind of way, this idea of switching it to Social Security COLA might be possible? It would take a very keen legal mind. And I'm sure that that person exists, but probably at $500 an hour, you know? I could do some research, because I worked as a legal secretary at the United Nations in Switzerland and in New York. Cindy, who helped me write the letter to the archperson, she has been a legal secretary. She lives also at Greenbrier. She's been a legal secretary for years. I haven't worked in the field for quite a while. I'm 82. I still have a brain. My feet don't work too good. But I'd like to ask, please use your caring selves to help. You might, one day, you might find that you or someone dear to you is in the same position I'm in and all of us at Greenbrier. You wouldn't want that. So think to the future a little bit and help us old people. We are in favor of 755, and we don't understand this 7% rule that's coming out somewhere, out of the stratosphere. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our first business item. 2025-26 Biennial Budget Related Ordinances and Resolutions. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget-related ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Buchanan or Fritz? Mr. Fritz?
Um, good evening, council, mayor and deputy mayor. I have for you an ex, another exciting presentation on budget. Uh, we, you'll get one more on December third if all our plans go as we, we hope. But, um, we'll just move forward with tonight. We got lots to talk about. This particular, um, presentation is focused on our property tax levy, which where a staff is hoping that the council will approve and adopt this evening. Um, the deadline is by the end of the month, so if it's not adopted tonight, then, uh, we're looking at a special meeting to make sure that happens to meet the statutory deadlines. Um, there's four additional ordinances for your consideration this evening. One is to amend the existing budget. Um, one is to adopt, uh, new building valuation tables, and I'll go into the why on that, um, here in a little bit. One is to adopt, um, the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget. And then finally, to adopt the authorized positions, pay and benefit plans for, um, twenty-twenty-five. In addition, we'd like to talk a little bit about the proposed changes to our fees and charges for services schedule. Um, and finally, I'd like to remind council that ideally, tonight would be the last night you would make any, any changes. And hopefully they, um, aren't, uh, so significant that they send me to the loony bin. But, uh, your will is my, is, is my command. So, um, we, we will do what you choose. Let's first talk about the, the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget. In the meeting last week, we went through kind of an itemized list of all of the changes and revisions that staff recommended to the initial, um, city manager's proposed budget. Um, and, um, the numbers shown in that presentation included all those changes, save for one. We also, during that presentation, brought up the fact that we wanted to include the safety improvements to City Hall front counters. That's project F twenty-five zero zero two off of the CIP. So, the budget ordinance that you have in front of you incorporates this project into that. It's got a design budget of thirty thousand and a ballpark construction budget of a hundred thousand. And when I say ballpark, that's because until we know what the design is, we don't really know how much it's gonna cost. So it's being, uh, the proposal is to put it both into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and into the twenty-four, or twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And the reason for that is that we're, we wanna do the design now. Um, and so some monies would be spent this biennium and some monies would, for that project would also be spent in the next biennium. So our biennial budgets, um, they're adopted in ordinance by fund. They, the, it's a two-year appropriation for both the operating and the capital improvement projects. And unfortunately, appropriations have to include what we call non-expeditures in the accounting world, which is a hard concept for a lot of, um, uh, laypersons to understand. So I'll, I've got this fancy illustration that, uh, Mr. Buchanan says I must include in my all presentations to help illustrate what I'm talking about when I say non-expeditures. So, non-expeditures primarily are made up of transfers between funds. So here's an example. We've got two funds, the Park Impact Fund and the city, or the Park CIP Fund. So, impact fees are received by the city. We put them in a special accounting bucket called Park Impact. So those revenues coming in go into that special bucket. And then when we wanna build the park project, we pay for it out of the Park CIP Fund. So, now we need to move the funding, which is in the Park Impact Fund bucket, over to the Park CIP bucket. And that is done through transfers between funds. So it shows, uh, what, what the appropriations do. It is, it includes the cost of the transfer out as an expenditure and the cost of building the, the park improvement as an expenditure. So it grosses everything up, transfers do. But there's really, it's not an actual expenditure of more money. So it, uh, the, the, um, ordinance always has, um, a higher, uh, dollar value in it than when you're talking about t, true dollars being spent out of the budget. Uh, let's switch to the staffing salaries and benefits ordinance. So I'm gonna run through kind of a litany of all the changes that were proposed in the budget, um, just to give you an overview of what's been discussed the last few meetings. This ordinance incorporates the, the changes proposed for the public works maintenance structure of transitioning the Assistant Public Works Director position into three different managers' positions. So the Operations Manager would be repurposed from the Assistant Public Works Director position. Development Permit Review Manager would, um, be, uh, would be filled by elevating a Senior Engineer into that position and the Senior Engineer position would be eliminated. And then the Capital Programs Manager, um, position would be a new position. It provides for support of a surface water, of the Surface Water Management Program by adding a Surface Water Management, uh, Surface Water Specialist and a Maintenance Worker Two. These would be new positions. Um, and, and these positions are funded through the Surface Water Management fees that we collect through property taxes. And then it elevates an experienced engineer that we have on our team from an Engineer One to an Engineer Two. It incorporates in the Executive Department, um, a title change. The Assistant to the City Managers would receive a title change to Assistant City Manager. This does not change their pay grade. Uh, it replaces the, uh, Executive Assistant slash Deputy City Clerk position with a Management Analyst. The duties would include HR, intergovernmental, uh, economic development, special program, or projects, et cetera. And it adds a second Management Analyst position, uh, which would work on community engagement and emergency management, et cetera. It revises the sick leave accrual rate from eight hours a month to nine hours a month. This brings it in alignment with what our crews have been working, or our staff, all of our staff have been working, um, for over, uh, well, over a decade, actually, over fourteen years now. We switched to a, basically a nine-day work schedule. So this corresponds to accruing enough, um, sick leave in one month to be able to take one day off of work. And, um, it incorporates this, the Cost of Living Adjustment, um, that we discussed last meeting of three point six percent into the, um, salary schedules. It also incorporates, um, uh, the, the cost of benefits increasing into the benefits, um, uh, contributions from the city. Um, yet it maintains those contributions at the same ratio. So if a particular benefit provided ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the premiums were provided by the city, then the city continues to provide it at that ratio. It removes the retention bonus program from all employment groups. Um, and it revises the vacation accrual rates to the tables displayed above. So the top table is the way that, uh, vacation is accrued currently. And one of the things that I learned when I, I, I used to work for the State Auditor's Office. I was a state employee. And I enjoyed an accrual table similar to the one down at the very bottom of the, of the display, where newer employees had a higher rate of accrual, um, earlier in their career. But overall, for the length of it, the, the vast majority of the accrual table, uh, works out to be the same. Um, when I came to Woodenville, I was, I found out that I had to have to work longer and harder to get th, the same number of vacation days. Um, we heard during, we did an employee survey, a satisfaction survey. And one of the things we heard clearly from that survey was work-life balance and the ability to accrue vacations doesn't seem, uh, amicable to our, uh, competitors. We looked at that, we agreed, and we're recommending that we change it. It's current, the proposal here currently models it after the state of Washington and what they pay their employees, or how they pay out the benefit to their employees. So let's jump into the, um, budget amendments for the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. This is big summary. It, it rolls everything up into, uh, really simple buckets. We're proposing an amendment of two thousand four hundred dollars for supplies, services, seven thousand, or seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, almost thirteen thousand dollars. Most of that is because we had an obligation to pay the Woodenville Fire and Rescue, uh, Plan Review Fees that we had been collecting. And, um, uh, that was four hundred and forty thousand dollars of fees that we needed to remit to them and that wasn't budgeted. So it's a budget amendment to cover those fees. Those fees had been collected, um, as part of the permitting process. It doesn't affect the general, uh, uh, the general fund in any way. And they were fees that are due to the Fire District. The capital outlay of a hundred and forty-seven dollars, um, nearly a hundred thousand of that is the dump truck that council, uh, approved to purchase with, fully knowing that, um, there was a roughly a hundred thousand dollar over-budget purchase decision there. Um, it also includes things like the, um, uh, replacement and upgrades of the lights on Northeast North Woodenville Way to get those lights working, lighting upgrades for Wilmont and Rotary Park, uh, all of which council's been made aware of before we took action on those items. Um, a, and you'll notice that transfers out, that grossing up activity is a pretty big number. A lot of that is to, is, is movement of money into, from one bucket into three different buckets. The general, moving roughly one point, uh, eight five million dollars from the general fund into, um, our Strategic Budget Reserve Fund to adequately fund it to our policy, which is fifteen percent of, uh, operating expenditures annually. And to our Building Hall, um, equi, um, Equipment Replacement Reserve to, um, to fully fund it, which is to fund it at a, of a half a million dollars. So it brings it up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's because we're also planning a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital outlay in twenty-five and twenty-six. And then, um, another roughly, uh, one million dollars uh, into our reserve for replacing the Woodenville Sports Field turf, uh, which fully funds that. Um, and let's go ahead and move to the fees, rates and charges for services. Uh, the proposed changes starts with, uh, building permits. So, um, ordinance number seven, seven, five updates the twenty-twenty-two Construction Cost Estimate Table in the Woodenville Municipal Code to new Construction Cost Estimate values that are, um, uh, the current twenty-twenty-four values. That's roughly a five point five percent increase. And how that, why that matters is builders will use those tables to estimate the valuation of their project. And when they submit their valuation as part of their permit, uh, application, uh, the city uses that to determine what their building permit and plan review fees equate to. So by increasing these estimates, it actually has the net effect of increasing the building permit fees. Um, and we opted to do this instead of doing across-the-board changes to our fees this year as a way of maintaining, um, the hundred percent cost recovery efforts for building permit activities, which was, um, the policy decision made by council a few years ago. It also increases, uh, fees that are collected and remitted to, uh, for the most part, remitted to the Fire District uh, for work that they perform on behalf of the city, which is plan reviews and inspections as part of the building permit process. Their operational inspections they do, um, the Fire District is not recommending to upgrade, uh, uh, increase those fees. Actually, one other, well, um, one other thing related to fees for building permits. Within the last couple of days, an issue has come up regarding, uh, right-of-way permits and the possibility that we need to look at revising those fees because a scenario of, of the volume of right-of-way linear fee has come up to where it may make sense that we need to consider alternatives. So, we're gonna evaluate that and at the, the December third meeting, if we have a recommendation, we'll, we'll bring it then to council. So Robert and I will put our heads together and figure it out. But we may have one more recommendation with fees when, when we bring the res, the full resolution forward. Oh, how exciting. And our reset begins.
Are we needing to take a recess?
Yeah.
About five minutes. All right, let's adjourn for five minutes, allow a reset. Thank you. Right now regarding this windstorm?
Yeah, and I on the break there, apologize to a couple of you. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm on the text messages with a group of of local responders on it. So we're monitoring it. We've got a number with those last couple gusts of trees down already and a couple transformers hit, it sounds like, but we're working on details. We don't have any road closures to report now, but there will inevitably be some. Just we'll try to keep you guys updated as as we get along here.
And earlier, we talked about it today. You I got extra crews out working on this anticipation of this happening.
We have, I think we have four, if not five, crew on call right now, so we're we're well-prepared and ready to respond as necessary.
Great, thank you. Okay, where were we, Mr. Fritz?
We were talking about fees and charges for services, and I was just about to move to the next slide and talk about things outside of the development services realm related to fees. So the fee table that was provided in your packet also updates the school impact and transportation impact fees with what's been proposed and will be adopted, likely to be adopted in the December meeting. If there's any changes to those fees, they would also be incorporated into the the fee table. The increases to the there there was an increase for providing passport photos. We went from a whopping twelve dollars per photo to sixteen dollars. We noticed that that was far more that's the low end of what most people are charging out there. And then surface water man and by the way, we 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 don't even come close to recovering our costs for passport services. I think we maybe pull in fifteen percent of the cost of the staffing to perform that service.
Mr. Fritz, what what what's that what's that a dollar amount? What are we talking?
For the
Well, what what we're what we're losing by not recuperating our costs on it?
Well, if we just look at one staff position, you know, it's let's say it's roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for that staff position after benefits and everything. And we pull in, I think, just off off the top of my head memory-wise, I think, like thirty-five thousand dollars a year in in revenue from that program.
Any idea how many applications or requests we get a year?
Uh, I could certainly provide that. We have that statistic, but I don't have it with me.
Okay, thank you.
And then finally, a three percent across-the-board for the surface water management rates, that's in accordance with the council adopted rate policy to mean make sure that we continue to fund the program and be able to provide the services required there. And when I say required, I want to be clear, a lot of the services that we provide from our surface water management program are dictated to us through our permit with the state and and the Feds. And that would be the review of all of the different ordinances and the resolution that will come back to you in December third, and I'm happy to take any questions. And then I'll go ahead and advance to the slide with the recommended motions.
Any questions for our finance director? Councilmember Best Campbell?
Regarding the building valuation table, so it went up five percent from 2022 till today. What goes into that five percent? Is it just materials? Is it time? Is it a massive conglomeration of things that are more finance director?
Robert, the question is about the building valuation tables and what goes into the calculation of those tables?
ICC made those calculations based on, I think, national construction costs, and then there's like adjustments for local, but the it comes from the ICC tables.
Deputy Mayor Randall?
And I had a question about you explain the process of transferring from one account to another. Do you have a good example of one of those that we have for this budget cycle?
One of those that we have in this budget cycle? Well, I mean, every every month, we transfer money, general fund tax dollars, to the park maintenance fund, because the park maintenance fund's only source of revenue is sports field rentals, and sports field rentals doesn't generate enough revenue to to cover the cost of maintaining all of the parks. So we'll we subsidize from the general fund to park maintenance fund by doing a transfer of funds every month.
Okay, that makes sense.
Are you good?
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I have some motions.
Yep, a whole lot of them. I moved to pass second reading and adopt ordinance number seven seven six, levering property taxes for 2025 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Randall?
No discussion.
Anybody else? Seeing none, can we I'll just unless I have to, we get a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
I moved to pass first reading of ordinance number seven seven four, amending of the 2023, 2024 biennial budget as presented.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I moved to pass first reading of ordinance number seven seven eight, establishing authorized employee positions, pay ranges, and benefits for 2025 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay.
Well, I don't see you got there.
Put put some good diesel in that.
Just like the plan.
Okay, discussion and discussion, Mr. Deputy Mayor, did you have any? Councilmember Best Campbell?
I'm just going to reiterate what I've said the last three years about employee positions and pay. It would be nice not to overload staff and continually have this done in-house. I had a brief conversation today with our finance director and city manager, and there are some really interesting ideas about what we could do for staff retention, but I think it is a big lift for all the other projects that we have going on in the city, and there's only so many hats one head can wear. So I'm fine with the employee positions as it is, but moving forward, I'd like to have an actual professional outside organization to come in and give us a baseline and ideas for how we can adjust moving forward, because I think we're getting to the point where we're guessing. I don't like guessing. I want to be able to find something scientific and point to the data and say, this is the attrition rate, this is what you can expect, this is what you can't expect. And I really do think that we owe it to the public to do that and not just fall back on, well, it's easy to give CPI increases.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next motion.
I moved to pass first reading, ordinance number seven seven seven, adopting the 2025 biennial budget as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Best Campbell?
There are a lot of things in this budget I like. There are some things in there I don't like, but I do believe that we can triage and fix the things that maybe could have been better. We don't necessarily need to kill the patient to have a successful surgery, so I'd like us in the next biennial, the next year, when this new biennial budget passes, to really look for ways to make the city work for the people who live here and start taking care of the things that we need to take care of first. Fun things are fun, but you know, there are things that aren't fun that still need to get taken care of. I'm thinking particularly of the trestle. I know that that's that's been first and foremost on people's minds. We're working forward on that. I'd really like to get started with with something like that. It's boring, but sometimes boring is the sexiest thing that you can show somebody.
Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor Randall?
Question for the council member, like, was there anything beyond the trestle that you would push up to the top?
Deputy Deputy Mayor Randall, we're not not allowed to have a direct conversation on council. I apologize, but if you want to ask the question of staff or for future discussion. So just off the floor. Okay, I I actually, I want to thank staff for this budget. We in my travels, I can tell you that how there there's a lot of jurisdictions right now that are deficit deficit spending, and I want to highlight that Woodinville is has a budget surplus. We have a balanced budget, and we're doing a lot of things for a city the size of fifteen thousand with fifty staff. So the the trestle is an important project. There are things, there are parts that have to be put in place before we can do anything on the trestle. One of those is the grid road that'll serve as a detour route. We have timelines for that, and we have money set aside for that, and and we're going to have a discussion at some point about maintaining the priority of of five million dollars from the state to help us with that project. So again, I'd like to congratulate the city, and I think we we've done a great job for the residents that we serve. We have a balanced budget. We're not raising any taxes, and there's a lot of jurisdictions that I talked to that cannot say that. So I'm really proud of what Woodinville's doing, and and again, thank you to staff for working hard on that. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I moved to pass first reading of ordinance number seven seven five, amending the building valuations table in sections twenty-one point six-two dot zero six-zero of the Woodinville Municipal Code.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Did you get everything you needed?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Okay, so business item number four, ordinance number seven five five, City of Woodinville Tenant Protections. Mr. Hill?
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I am pleased to be bringing forward an item we have been discussing for quite some time now. As rents continue to increase dramatically across the region, City Council has asked staff to explore what can be done locally to help address this. For context, council discussed this item in fall of 2023 initially, but given that it was anticipated to be addressed through the state legislature, and there was an ongoing lawsuit with Kenmore, it was deemed best to pause discussion before moving forward. Staff brought this item back in September 2024 as a discussion item and received feedback on what council would like a final ordinance to look like, which is what we are bringing you tonight. As a quick refresh, I know I showed you this chart before, but this is part of the Housing Action Plan that council adopted last May. The Housing Action Plan showed that housing in Woodinville has become increasingly expensive in recent years, while income between 2010 and 2020 went up thirty-seven percent, median rent went up seventy percent. While additional units are coming online in the future, tenant protection tenant protections can be looked at as an immediate way to address some of the challenges raised by our Housing Action Plan. This past legislative session, we kept an eye on HB twenty-one fourteen, which would have addressed many of the goals discussed by council and helped mitigate fear of legal challenges like we saw with the city of Kenmore. HB twenty-one fourteen had a wide wide range of protections included, and we expect to see some of these come back in 2025. And actually, in tonight's staff recommendation for your legislative agenda, there's an item for tenant protections there as well. But our staff recommendation leans to the side of the modest items included in the legislation that could be perceived as having the highest chance of making it through the state legislature going forward. This bill passed out of the House but failed to make it out of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, protection range from limits on rent increases to extended notification periods. So now looking at what we can do as a city to help mitigate this, Arch is able to provide some guidance that's helpful in this space. In 2022, Arch put forward three recommendations of tenant protections that many cities cities have adopted in various forms. The full list of Arch rental rental protections can be found in your agenda packet, and I also placed a chart at your seat with protections found in neighboring jurisdictions. And then as a recap with the city of Kenmore, Kenmore faced litigation with their tenant protections item that they passed. Staff monitored that outcome as well as convened with Arch, NUSA, and the North King County Coalition on Homelessness to develop a list of recommended protections that are meaningful but not putting the city at risk of a lawsuit. The city received a letter from both the Washington Multi-Family Housing Association and the Seattle King County Realtors in response to the proposed ordinance. Copies of both letters are found at your seat. Here on your screen, you'll see the proposed tenant protections that capture the comments made by council at the September meeting, which seeks to expand on protections to include not only rent but also fee increases. This also requires landlords to make tenants aware of their rights and prevents the requirement of a social security number for screening. In addition, there is a requirement for a minimum of a hundred and twenty days' notice for an intent for non-renewal and keeps the limits on move-in fees and installments for I want to thank council for your engagement on this item as we watched it play out across neighboring jurisdictions and at the state legislature. I have a recommendation for you on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm going to leave it on the previous screen while we have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I I'm having difficulty with this because I see there was a lawsuit there, and what did we do to bring the property owners in to discuss what's happening, why the costs are going up, and address it from a root cause, trying to understand both sides? Here we have central planning kind of pushing controls, but we don't know what the owners have to contend with and what we're creating. We're kind of creating as a community, as a state, we're creating a lot of extra burden and cost and tax, and I think we need to understand how much that is and how that amortizes over apartments and and then try to come to a conclusion. So I think we left one of the stakeholders out, and we're kind of coming in from a central planning standpoint, which is kind of sick for city government, so.
Sure, yeah. To address a couple of those points, the Kenmore lawsuit was related to their just cause provision and their tenant protections, which they did ultimately decide to settle their lawsuit and drop those protections. Staff is not recommending that we include just cause exemptions as one of ours, so it would not be if a lawsuit did come forward to the city, it would not be the same that the city of Kenmore faced.
Right, but did we did we investigate and call the area property owners and try to find out what's driving the cost? Why is the rent going up instead of, you know, do we feel that the rent's just going up because they could charge more and they they do it because that's what they want to do every year, raise it up double digits? Or is there something else that's driving that, you know, the cost of operations and whatnot? And what can we do to address that? Because we can't squeeze the property owners out either, you know? There'll be a point where property owners won't want to build apartments or rent houses in the future because there's nothing in it. You've got kind of strong controls dictating what they can do.
Sure, yeah, I I definitely understand that perspective, and I think we, you know, as a supply and demand issue, I think Woodinville's doing an excellent job at increasing our supply. We're seeing more units come online, definitely in the next ten, fifteen years, which is fantastic and will hopefully have an impact in pricing as well. And then as far as engaging landlords in this discussion, over the last several items that have gone out to council, we've received various correspondences from associations like the ones that sent letters tonight, kind of expressing their concerns with rental protections, which I think would be expected. They highlight some of their concerns, and I think one of those that is a tangible thing that council could react to is requesting a delayed implementation of a proposed ordinance from thirty days to a hundred and twenty days.
Well, again, we we haven't brought them in and actually done a panel root cause. We haven't tried to do anything innovative. We're just doing the same thing, pushing rent We're just doing the same thing, pushing, uh, rent controls and pushing items in here on top of, you know, creating burden for, for these guys. They're getting squeezed and I think they need to have a voice and let us understand where, where that, uh, cost is coming from.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you, and I just want to thank staff for putting together this proposal. While it's fairly conservative, it doesn't include anything like rent controls. It does put us in line with several of our neighboring jurisdictions, including King County, which actually helps our property owners because, uh, several of them own properties in multiple jurisdictions. And the more consistency they can have across their jurisdictions, the easier it is for them to know what is expected of them. I think this, uh, ordinance strikes a good balance between providing some protections for our tenants, which are right now about forty percent of our city residents, um, with not overburdening our landlords. Because here it is requiring noticing, but, um, there's not excessive hoops that they have to jump through. And I, um, most of what we have put forth in this ordinance is based on the Arch recommendations, which, uh, have been in place for several years now. And when they were made in two thousand and twenty-two, they included extensive, um, community feedback and listening sessions with tenants and landlords across the county and this region. The city has been participating with Arch for many years now, and we were part of that process and those discussions as they took shape. We just are a little bit slow in actually implementing the recommendations here in the city. So, um, I do support the ordinance as written, um, but I do, I do think that there is room for a delayed onset as, uh, one of the letters that we received mentioned. Um, and this is something that, uh, we could set a timeline, just allow, uh, allow our landlords a little bit of window to actually implement these changes successfully, um, so that they're not in a period where they should already be notifying people by the time that this goes into effect, so.
Councilmember Evans.
Quick point of order, do we need to pause or are we still live? Okay, thank you. Um, I am really thankful that we brought this back. I know we've talked about it a number of times, um, and we put it out there as part of our Housing Action Plan. So it shouldn't really be a surprise to anyone. Um, I know I've been a landlord for many years, uh, in the past, and my family's, uh, owns properties that we rent out. These are a normal part of running a business. Uh, it's just like planning ahead, budgeting. Um, I, I think that, um, I, I don't see how you could possibly call this rent control. We're just saying if you're going to raise it more than ten percent, you have to give people six months' notice because it's really hard for people to find a place to live. I know multiple people, um, recently who had very large, um, uh, rent increases, like more than fifteen percent. And they had literally thirty to sixty days to find somewhere new, and it's almost impossible in that amount of time to find somewhere to move. And so, um, I, I think that this is, really does strike a good balance. Um, and I also, um, endorse or support having the delayed implementation to give property owners a chance to, um, be able to implement this without any negative impact to their business. Um, so with that, I move to adopt ordinance number seven, five, five, establishing tenant protections in the City of Woodinville as amended.
Second.
I have a motion in second. As a maker motion, would you like to start that off?
Um, yeah, I think that we should definitely have the hundred and twenty days before we're able to, um, fully implement this, just to give landlords and property owners, um, the chance to really be able to, um, get their arms around what this means. And, um, I, I think that it would be good for us to also talk about this on social media. So it's not just coming from the city website, but that we also have multiple ways that we're getting out to people who probably consume in many different ways. We want to get out to our property owners. We want to get out to our, um, renters in the city, so thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I think this is a great step in protecting our tenants here in the City of Woodinville. We always talk about keeping people housed. The number way to keep people housed is to make sure that they can stay in the housing that they're already in. So I think this is that great first step going forward. As Councilmember Arnt said, these are reasonable things that are being implemented, um, that doesn't impact, uh, the ability for the landlord to raise rent, just impacts the ability to provide notice ahead of time. And I think that's going to be really helpful to our tenants here, which is making up a larger portion of the city of Woodinville. I also agree on the delay onset of implementing these, uh, policies. I've been involved, uh, during the day job of implementing rental protections in a different jurisdiction. And I think putting that delay would be helpful, but also creating some kind of, if we have the opportunity, just an open forum where people want to show up and they have questions about how they can implement this or what this is going to mean to their businesses going forward, uh, where we can answer those questions as well. So, uh, again, this is a great job, uh, first step in protecting the tenants here in Woodinville. But I think we also have to do a good job of informing the, the landlords that this is impacting and providing as much resources and e- education as we can to help them implement this throughout this process as well, so that's clear as well.
Thank you. I'm going to, uh, also support the motion. Um, I, I've been a landlord for thirty years, probably, maybe more. Can we go back to the previous slide? Notice of rights required a landlord, notice of rights on our lease agreement? I don't have a problem with that.
Point of order.
Yes.
Uh, you're supposed to recognize everyone before you make a comment.
That's not a rule.
That, that, that's.
I don't believe that's a rule. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Everybody's, everybody here has had a chance to speak yet. I have not had a chance to speak yet.
Other people are, okay. It's, um.
So the first one, everybody's going to get a turn, it's Councilmember Taylor. So, uh, I have not had a chance to speak at all, so.
But you're the mayor and you're the last one. You're the facilitator for the conversation.
I, 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 I do not know that that's one of the adopted rule that we have.
Well, let's ask the.
So the notice of rights, I don't have a problem with that. Notice of rent and fee increases as a landlord and a tenant, I don't see any problem with that. A right to privacy, I don't, I don't see the need for, uh, a landlord to get a social security number. You know, I've done background checks, social security number is not necessary for that. Notice of a tenant non-renewal, that's not a, a big deal. Limits on move-in fees, that's not a big deal. Installments and move-in expenses, this is a pretty benign, uh, uh, is, this is a benign motion to both landlords and tenants. And, uh, I, I think that council would, uh, in the direction that we're headed, I think council would be in a, uh, behoove, uh, residents of Woodinville that we do more for affordable housing because, um, that is a definite need. So every chance that we get to, uh, talk to builders to, to, to have affordable housing will address, uh, many of the issues that were, that are causing this motion. Uh, Councilmember Best Campbell.
Uh, well, I would have asked a question had I been called on to ask a question, but I need to just.
You just were, you just were.
There has been a motion made, and if there's a motion made, I am limited to two times. And now I can't ask the two questions that I was entitled to before the motion was made by design. So there are certain protections that we as a council cannot take because we're not allowed, because the state hasn't given us that right. One of them is rent control, is that right? So I know that we've heard a lot from people coming in and talking to us specifically asking for rent control and would that we could provide that? Unfortunately, under the state statute, we can't. So this is, I guess, the next best thing, even though I don't think it goes far enough. There's options for us to talk about legislation in Olympia, um, but I don't think we should be content with just this being the only tenant protection. This is what everyone else has done, so we've just caught up with everyone else. So I don't think we should pat ourselves on the back. This is a first step. I think if we're serious, we go to Olympia and say, it's time for you guys to give us either in the city, the opportunity to do rent control or for the state to do it. Um, this is, we're just exactly where everyone else is. So yay for us for being later to the party. We got there, I get it. But I would like to see the state really take up the things that they won't let us do. And if they're unwilling to do it, if there's the will in a city, then the state shouldn't get in our way. So this is fine. Uh, if we wanted to deliver implementation, it's fine. But this isn't where we should stop. I think we really do need to think about more. And when you see rent increasing at the percentages that it increases, there's no way costs are going up forty percent. And that five hundred dollars a month is reasonable for you to recoup costs. I don't think that's reasonable either. So there's a ways for us to go, um, and I'd like to see us go there. I mean, obviously I don't want us to get sued, um, but talking to Olympia and really pushing our policy there, um, is where I would really like us to see, uh, to see us go on the next steps. Because this is, this is cracking open the door, but I think we should kick it in. There's really a problem with affordable rents in this state.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Uh, I do agree that this is kind of the minimum, but one of the reasons we're acting on this right now is because Olympia failed to actually present this the last time it came before them. Um, it's fantastic that we'll actually be talking about our legislative agenda tonight. So as we present that, this is something that we should consider and also consider that it's good for us to actually take advantage of our opportunities to go speak with statewide legislation, uh, and discuss items like these when they come forward. This, like I said, is the pretty much bare minimum. Uh, this should allow landlords to do whatever's necessary to adjust. I have seen in some jurisdictions and some property owners out of state where there are tax increases that are fairly onerous. That's not what this is. This is, once again, very small change and should not affect any existing owners. Uh, but hopefully it will impact some people who are, are experiencing very quick increases to their rent. At least this will space it out, give them some time to actually make some considerable decisions. And, uh, I think it's, uh, definitely something we've heard from our community from, uh, two citizens that have come here and spoken bravely and shared their experiences. So with that in mind, that's how we should push forward. How do we actually continue to, to make them safe and keep them housed?
Any other discussion? Questions? Seeing none, let's have a real call vote.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Hill. Business item number five, discussion of the draft two thousand and twenty-five legislative agenda. Mr. Hill, you're up again.
All right, just give me one second here. Okay, good evening again, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jared, and tonight I will be discussing the upcoming legislative session and look forward to getting feedback from you on our draft legislative agenda. Um, so just as some recap information here, the Washington State Legislature will convene for its annual legislative session on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This session is the first of the biennium and will be a long session of a hundred and five days, concluding on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. We are in the first district represented by Senator Stanford, Representatives Dewar and Kloba. We will work closely with these three offices to communicate the legislative agenda and appreciate how much support we have received from our funding ask and legislative priorities over the last several years. Since this is the first session of the new biennium, adopting the operating capital and transportation budget will be key action items as legislative session kicks off. Two thousand and twenty-five is a long session, so we can anticipate approximately twenty-five hundred bills being introduced that staff will monitor and use the legislative agenda to guide action on. Here is our two thousand and twenty-four legislative agenda for your reference, as well as a couple of key accomplishments, um, that came out of last session. And in the past, council has also adopted the AWC legislative agenda. This year, after months of outreach and meetings with Legislative Priorities Committee, five main, main priorities have been identified. Uh, in your agenda packet, you can also see I attached links to their additional details on each of these slides. Um, they do policy briefings on each of these five areas as well. Woodinville is also a member of Arch who has put forward two legislative goals. This is the second year that Arch has put legislative priorities forward. The Arch Board encourages member cities to adopt these goals as well. And, um, they're pretty similar to last year and one that we're seeing from a lot of different jurisdictions. The first one is related to funding for affordable housing and, um, the REIT tax. And then this one is a little bit different this time. It's, uh, related to reducing barriers and finding ways, uh, to allow property owners to promote affordable housing through, um, advancements such as allowing, uh, development on the properties owned by religious organizations. So I split, um, these are all found on your, uh, staff report, but I split this into three different slides, um, of the draft points for discussion. So the next three slides are the proposed items in, to include in our two thousand and twenty-five agenda. While this is primarily, primarily used for state legislation, this can also be considered a guiding document at the federal level as well. This is simply a draft, and if there are areas I missed the mark on, council, um, if I missed the mark on council discussion for last year, I'm happy to make any modifications or additions for when a formal agenda comes to council later this year. These are designed to be fairly high-level to allow staff to be able to use this as a tool to fall back on when bills that are not specifically mentioned in the agenda but fit within the principles of the document. So if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point as we go through these. But, um, like I said, they're all listed in your staff report, so I'm not going to read them verbatim. But the first two items are funding requests, which are truly the, the key areas importance, of importance for us right now. So the first one is related to getting our five million dollars from Move Ahead Washington included in the next biennium. This is especially important now that Initiative twenty-one, seventeen failed. So that funding is still very much, uh, an option for us to get moved in as quickly as possible, which is great. So we are seeking funding options as well for the NPRSA Community and Aquatic Center, uh, in whatever form that might look like. Second, we will continue to communicate to the state that the city is the best body to implement density and land use decisions, and we should be able to implement our Housing Action Plan in a way that works for Woodinville residents. And then on the public safety front, we want to ensure that Woodinville continues to be a safe place to live, work, or visit. Specifically, um, work needs to be done in the spaces of juvenile crime and organized retail theft, as well as monitoring the fiscal impacts of the state considering reducing public offender caseloads. Woodinville has done a really excellent job on increasing efforts on human services in the last two years, which I think our conversation prior to this speaks to that. But, um, I think we have some opportunities to incre, to continue these efforts in our legislative advocacy. Our newly established community court program and programs similar to that can be, become a new statewide standard to help individuals from getting stuck in the criminal justice system. And following the grant passed Supreme Court decision, local governments have increased ability to prevent encampments from forming in public spaces. And this agenda supports increasing behavioral health treatment options and workforce development, while also supporting encampment renew, removal and local rights away. And last year, council was hopeful that the state would pass statewide tenant protections. So I formally submitted that into the proposed legislative agenda. This also calls for the restoration, um, of transit in suburban communities following the COVID pandemic and not tying TOD to bus stops that are not in service. Council has also called for an increased homeownership opportunities. So there is an item included for increased condominium construction and reducing the development barriers of condominiums. On the environmental front, this is another area I feel like we've had a lot of success in the last couple of years, and we're asking for the tools to implement our climate action plan, as well as funding for the court-mandated removal of culverts. And finally, ensuring all, all modes of transportation are looked at for funding, including trails, streets, roads, and highways, um, and so that we can continue to get the funding needed to knock out our East Trail project. So I have next steps listed out on the screen here, as well as a couple of key dates that are, um, on the horizon. But, um, after looking at this, I would love to take counsel feedback on items. But, um, after looking at this, I would love to take council feedback on items that should be elevated on our agenda. Are there items that you've been hearing from your constituents that I might have missed? And I'm happy to answer any question, but that does conclude the presentation.
Councilmember Vess Campbell.
Uh, like we did with last year's agenda, I'd like to add public education on there because we are seeing expanded growth in our areas, and we're seeing people taking, uh, seeing builders take advantage of MFTE, which means that we're not getting that money, but we still have kids who are going to school. So, I think they need to give us a little bit more flexibility in funding for schools. I know that the school system right now is not what it was when my son graduated two years ago, so it's, it's a different world, but I think we owe it to the people who live here now, but also the people who are coming in here, that they should have access to the same education system that we do. Specific to public transportation, we've really seen our, our service go down. I mean, we have signs over closed bus stops that are growing moss. It's been that long. I think that we should be more specific and say, at the very minimum, Woodinville needs to be brought back to pre-pandemic levels, at, at a minimum, particularly with the growth that we've seen. I also would love, and this is a, a pipe dream, but I would love for them to take up rent control. I would love for Woodinville to say, "We support it," um, and we would love to do whatever we can. We know how expensive rent is here. Um, why not? Uh, I think encouraging a conversation isn't a bad thing, and they have conversations down there, and I would love to hear what they have to say, and in any way we could support those conversations. I really think that it would behoove the people who live here that we all just take a step back and say, "Look, there's not going to be an easy answer, but we need to have the conversation anyway."
Can I ask one, uh, follow-up on that?
Mm-hmm.
For, um, the school district item, does that, in your mind, look like adopting NSD's legislative agenda similar to last year? Or are you looking maybe for a couple of points within our own agenda?
For now, I would say, let's go with NS, with what NSD is saying, but just in terms of the growth that Woodinville is seeing, and we're, we're trying to encourage builders to use MFTE. By doing that, we're decreasing the amount of money that the state gets, and the majority of funding for education comes from property tax. Of course, if they want to take up a different sort of taxing for, for schools, they're welcome to do that. I don't want to weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So, in the past, uh, this is, this, I think I've been down there three times, this, uh, or something like that. We, we narrowed it down to like three or four because we have a very limited time with our representatives. Is that the goal here, is we're, we're trying to narrow it down to three or four, or, or are we still sticking with a, a broad?
Yeah, I think, like you mentioned, how brief that interaction can be with, um, the, the different, uh, legislatures. There's important to have a couple of items that are relevant to the committees that they serve on that we bring up with them at each time. Um, I will say one thing, we started last year that, um, I'm in the process of scheduling for this year, is meeting with, um, our legislatures before they go down to Olympia, um, so that we have the time to go through our full agenda, um, and it's not as rushed. So, I think, um, having a couple highlighted points for each member that are specific to them is important, but, um, finding ways to carve out more time to, to communicate all of the items that our council priorities is, is also possible.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to forward that, um, I think certainly one of our top priorities should be the Move Ahead. Um, it's, it's, uh, for our trestle bridge replacement, that covers a lot of issues for Woodinville. It, it, uh, it's our main, it's one of our, probably our main bottleneck, uh, for traffic in Woodinville. Adding two extra lanes and a safe pedestrian path above connecting our city north to south or south to north, depending which way you're looking at it, uh, with a trail is important, um, adding the turn lanes. And if you, if you go there, a lot of people don't understand that that's a state route underneath the trestle. And I was over there today, um, and, uh, the roadway underneath is, is getting in really bad shape. So, I think that should be one of our top priorities. I also, um, I am concerned about, uh, education. I think, uh, one of our top priorities should be to fully fund education. Um, I think that the state's probably going to have to, or there's poss, strong possibility or possibility the state's going to have to step up even further on, uh, what is, uh, by constitution, their main priority is fund, fully funding education, so I would advocate for that. And of course, I'm always going to have, advocate for public safety, but, um, I also, I also think the state should figure out ways where we can get, uh, more ownership, affordable ownership opportunities, not just, um, not just apartments too. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Uh, I think you mentioned, uh, North Shore School District possibly having, uh, something to do with funding on their legislative agenda. Is there a way we can sign on to that, just to show approval or amplify that with our representatives?
Yeah, I haven't seen their, um, their 2025 legislative agenda yet. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I just haven't seen it, so I can, can look into that. Um, last year, I believe we adopted their legislative agenda as part of ours, which, um, I think worked well, so we could, we could do that route again. Um, and I would imagine that one of the items on their own legislative agenda is to, to fully fund, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I think these are all great. Uh, when we're talking about narrowing it down to three, I think one of the main things we should always focus on is, what is AWC and organizations like that already pushing? And what, what are they not pushing that's important to us? What are the things we want to bring before legislature, legislators that they may not be hearing all the time? Because when they're on the AWC agenda, they're going to be hearing that all the time from many different people, which is great. We should, if we have time, always push for that stuff as well, because it helps our residents. And, but if it is something they may not hear from other people, I think this is our chance to really be able to make that impact, to encourage our legislatures to push forward legislation that may actually be able to make that impact that otherwise may not have been as far on the radar, so that's my thoughts on those.
Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, I fully agree with that as well. Let's really prioritize, definitely the Move Ahead grant. We've got to get that. Um, and then, I think that we should really dive into what is most important to Woodinville specifically versus, like, uh, Councilmember Edwards said, what AWC is already really pushing hard. And, you know, I, I think about Arch. They don't have as much of a reach as AWC, so potentially some of the affordable, uh, or renter protections, really pushing for those. Because I know, in working with the business committee around here, uh, through the chamber, one of the biggest challenges to them is getting people to come to Woodinville to work for them because there's, there's no mass transit to get people here reliably. Um, and i- it's really expensive to live here, so people are driving from a long ways away. And I think if we could, if the state could do more to really support and increase, um, the availability of affordable housing, uh, so that people can afford to live near to where they work, reduce. I mean, it has lots of effects that go to our climate action plan. It goes to lots of things if people aren't having to drive. And I am wholly behind, uh, fully funding our education, or at least taking a look at how we fund it. Because school districts around the state are, I, I mean, they're really struggling, and they're having to make some really painful cuts, and it's really hurting our kids. We're having some classrooms that are close to forty kids in a classroom, and when you have forty-eight-year-olds... Okay, so when you have forty-eight-year-olds in a classroom, it's really hard to get good outcomes for them, and it just compounds year after year. And I, I think that the legislature has not had enough pressure from, from parents and communities to fully fund or at least reevaluate how we're funding education, and so those would be my three.
Councilmember Vess Campbell.
I was thinking about it. We need to keep it short with, with our legislators. I was thinking it's, uh, kids, transportation, and quality of life. The three things that draw people to Woodinville, um, we have great schools. Transportation, if you mention the trestle, you will probably see someone's hackles go up, and they will be angry. These are things that matter here. Um, and quality of life, people move here for a reason. They move here because of, um, environment. We care. We have a clean, a clean city. We go out of our way not to make it a concrete jungle. These are the things that matter to Woodinville, so I think that our message should be exactly what the people of Woodinville care most about. There is no one I have, I've met who wouldn't do anything for their children, and there is no one I've met who says that our roads are adequate. Um, so I think that doing exactly what it is that we hear people complain to us about all the time, that's what we should focus on. And I know that there are other groups that are going to focus on other things, but, you know, we've, we are here to represent the people, and kids are really important, it turns out, and so is people's ire at the trestle. So, you know, regardless of whether we get the grant this year or not, I know that Mr. Buchanan, we talked earlier, we're moving forward on it regardless of when we get that money, so it's going to happen. Um, but the state needs to know that this really is what's important to us, and putting our money where our mouth is, that really should be the only thing that we are concerned about right now.
I, I didn't add, um, well, actually, a question. I'll start with a question. The NPRSA, have we identified a bucket of money or anything from the state that we would have potential of going after? Because i- if so, I think that we should add that as a priority. If not, it shouldn't be a priority and go, go down there when there's really not going to be money available. But I think, uh, Community Rec Center, uh, pool would be a huge benefit to our area, and if there's money available to help us with that process, I think, uh, that would behoove us to explore that if it exists. But I don't want to go down there and ask for money that is not going to happen and waste one of our priorities.
Sure, yeah. Oh, good.
Yeah, I think, and that's exactly, I think, what Mr. Hill was getting at. I think some of the questions from council is, is, some of these are still pretty vague, but that gives us the flexibility. And then, there's a long list here, so we can, exactly as you guys have talked about, kind of pick and choose depending on who our audience is, right? So, uh, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I think i- it would be a waste of breath to go down and ask Olympia for money for that particular item because we know what state the budget's going to be in in those conversations. Um, but that, the way that we've got it kind of drafted, at least initially right now, that gives us the flexibility, whether we're talking to county council members at that level or we're talking even at the federal level, which I know there's some interest there. This gives us the flexibility to pick and kind of, kind of pick and choose the messages depending on the audience that we're working with. So, uh, we will go down there absolutely and ask for, and, and one of our big priorities should be asking for the Move Ahead money to ensure that's in the twenty-five, twenty-seven budget. Um, but it would be a waste of time to ask for the, the money for the other thing. So, the, we have that flexibility, and that's always by design when we create these legislative agendas.
Okay, thank you. I'd, I'd like to keep us at least, maybe that doesn't make it because there's not the money to go after. We should keep that as one of our priorities, maybe not one we're going to talk, because when, I'd like the flexibility when we're talking to our county representatives or federal representatives to be able to talk about opportunities that may arise with that. So, I think county, it would behoove us for a council to keep that as a, uh, one of the priorities, maybe not the top one that we take down to Olympia, but at least keep it up there so that we can, uh, uh, talk, uh, with the, with the full backing of, of Woodinville, um, to address that, so.
And one thing I'll add on that, Mr. Mayor, staff and Jared are, are very good at kind of creating that, those, the, the paper handouts and, and the, the collateral, and we go to different audiences that really is targeted at those audiences. So, I think kind of having the overall list and then allowing staff to kind of pick and choose where they need to, and, and they work, obviously, with our lobbyists at the different levels too, to tailor that message to the right audience. So, I, they, they're pretty good at that, I think.
Uh, and that's a good point, uh, Mr. City Manager. I, uh, I know that some of our representatives have moved into different roles and committees. Um, I, I'd like to see, um, uh, you know, maybe the next time we discuss this, what, what committees they're on and chair, and, and so that we can target our message, um, more efficiently to areas where our representatives would, might have a little bit more influence in some of our priorities. So, that would be kind of helpful.
Yeah, and I can even, um, send a, an email out to you all with, just to update on with the council and, or the committee assignments once they finalize that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay. Um, that's our business items. We're moving right on. Uh, public comments. Anybody signed up? Nobody signed up. Reports to City Manager.
I don't have anything. Uh, I said we're, we're monitoring a number of, of trees down. We've got, right now, I think the, the biggest one, we've got an actual road closure on One Thirty-second as you head up into the wedge. Uh, the one going up the hill over here in Old Town, as I understand, is directly across from Old Town, but only partially blocking the road. So, that's what we've got right now. Um, there will obviously be quite a bit more through the evening, so thank you for that.
Do, do we have any update on any power outages at this point?
Right now, we can't even get PSE's outage map up, so, uh,
Okay.
Yeah, last time we checked, there was quite a few, but that was several hours ago that was updated.
Okay. Uh, reports of council members. Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, just, first of all, thank you to the city staff and everybody who's out there helping to clear roads. I, I just really appreciate all that. Um, one quick thing, I, um, was really proud to represent Woodinville on the east rail for our, uh, Raze Grant at the Mountains to Sound, uh, Greenway Trust, um, event last week. There was about six hundred and seventy-five people there, and we were one of ten projects that were recognized. So, it was really great to be a part of that and just to see the support for the trail, um, regionally, so thank you.
Councilmember Edward, Edwards.
No report, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Uh, I just wanted to say that I went to the Arbor Day celebration this past weekend. It was fantastic to see, uh, a lot of people talking about how they're going to grow trees in their yard, how that supports, uh, the woodsy feel that we like to have here in Woodinville and nature. And, uh, I picked up yet another tree, so, um, we might need it after tonight, so nothing else. Thank you.
Councilmember Vess Campbell.
Uh, thank you. Um, well, I wanted to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving that's coming up next week. Um, and if you're cooking, take it easy. Um, if you're eating, definitely take it easy. If you're running the 5K, really take it easy. Um, and parents of college kids, you will be amazed at what sort of scruff and facial hair and long hair comes back and greets you. And it really doesn't matter because you're happy to see them, but don't be shocked because they look feral.
Councilmember Aron.
Thank you. Um, I also attended the Arbor Day event in the city, and it was fantastic. There was loads of children and families running around, learning about the importance of trees in our natural habitat here in the Northwest. But one thing I did notice as I was attending that event is outside of City Hall, um, there were several new signs, relatively new signs, stating that there are pesticides sprayed on the landscaping and to keep your pets off of them. I know this is an issue that we've talked about here on the dais before, and while I certainly do appreciate the signage, I, from my perspective, would prefer if we could move away from the application of pesticides in our public properties and parks. And then, I, I will just make a little plug that on December eleventh, NUSA will be holding a Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting where we will have, uh, Representative Dewar come and speak to us about potential housing legislation for the 2025 session. So, if you're interested in seeing what may be coming, um, you're welcome to attend that meeting.
What's that date again?
December eleventh.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, uh, good discussion about housing and opportunities. And I see out in the audience, we have, uh, Member Mr. Ahmad, and he is patient. Uh, he has a piece of property that looks like could, could put several houses on, and I'd like city staff maybe to work with him and try to figure out a way because it would be nice that we fill in, uh, in the residential area with similar housing and make opportunities for, uh, others that are looking to locate in Woodinville. So, uh, you know, I don't know if it's a planning commission activity or if it's a, just sit down and, and hammer it out and kind of come to something we can figure out. But I see him here every week and feel kind of sorry for him because I'm looking at the property, and it's like, it's, there's a lot of property around there. If, if he were to build similar to the adjacent, it would be, it would look like it would fit the community, so. Maybe something we can talk about.
Um, I don't have anything, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.